Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a virtual candidates forum for the seven candidates running in the Democratic primary for Long Beach City Council. Thank you to all the candidates for participating this evening. I'm Sarah Nicholas, President of the League of Women Voters of Long Beach. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government and works to increase understanding of major public policy issues and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League never supports or opposes political candidates or political parties. We're an organization fully committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion in principle and in practice. And participation in the League is open to all. I want to thank the Long Beach Library for once again cosponsoring with the League to give voters the opportunity to make an informed decision when they get to the polls. Thank you to the library's Janine Dillon, Tom Wojciechowski, Natasha Dax, and Mary Moore. Thank you to our moderator Judy Temkin Jacobson from the Port Washington League of Women Voters and our timekeeper Nancy Rosenthal from Southwest Nassau League. A special thanks to Eileen Lilly, our Long Beach Voter Services Director, for all her hard work on tonight's forum. The primary election is on June 22nd, but if you'd like to vote early, you can do so at Long Beach City Hall beginning on June 12th through June 20th. Thank you for joining us and thank you for submitting your questions. Because time is limited and we have seven candidates, it's impossible to address every question. But we'll try to cover a variety of issues that are important to Long Beach voters. If your specific questions are not addressed, we encourage you to reach out to the candidates. The video of this forum will be available after the forum on the League's website and on the Long Beach Library YouTube page. Now I'm going to turn it over to our moderator. Thank you.
I am your moderator. My name is Judy Temkin Jacobson, and I am not from Long Beach, which is one of our rules. I will now read the rules and procedures for virtual meetings with candidates. And all the candidates have agreed to these rules. The moderator will be a member of the League from outside the district. The candidates will speak in alphabetical order. Each candidate will be allowed two minutes for an opening statement. After candidates have spoken, the moderator will open the meeting with questions from the audience, which were submitted beforehand. And you may not have the questions you submitted asked, but as Sarah said, contact the candidates. The moderator will instruct the audience to confine the questions, well, we don't have to worry about that because they've been vetted. The moderator will be the arbiter of whether questions are appropriate, repetitive, or abusive. Now, each candidate will be given an opportunity to answer each question. Each candidate will be given one and a half minutes to answer each question. There will be no rebuttal. The moderator will attempt to rotate the order of speaking for each question. A League member Nancy Rosenthal, and say hi, will act as timekeeper. Here are her signs. One half minute from the end of any given time, Nancy will warn the speaker with that sign. When the time is up, the speaker will be allowed to finish the sentence. Repeatedly speaking past the deadline may result in a candidate being muted. Candidates will have two minutes for a closing statement and will speak in the opposite order of the opening statements. Well, no substitute speakers are allowed, but we don't have to worry about that either. The use of props, charts, visuals, and the distribution of campaign literature is prohibited. And your backgrounds all look fine. We've had some difficulties with that, but not here in Long Beach. Thank you. Only those individuals specifically authorized by the League may record or videotape a candidate event. The League of Women Voters owns the content of the candidate event and may post recordings of it in its entirety on League Media. Any use of the authorized recording requires the advanced approval of the League of Women Voters, except that other leagues may post the recording on their website. Only licensed media, including TV, radio, and newspapers, are entitled to air portions of this recording. No one is permitted to edit footage for campaign or other purposes. This recording taping policy includes live streaming. If a candidate event is being livestreamed, the League owns and must maintain control of the livestream. If it is being archived, it must be shown in its entirety. So these are the rules that the candidates have agreed to, and we will now move to opening statements. And we'll begin with Mr. Bendo.
Let me unmute myself there. So, uh, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this. My name is John Bendo. Uh, I live in the West End with my wife Linda. I am a nuclear engineer by profession, uh, having started my career designing nuclear submarines for the Navy. Uh, I am a veteran. I served for six years. Uh, I've been very active in our community for a long time. Uh, I think most people know I'm currently the president of the city council. Uh, but I did ten city council meetings for a number of years before I was on the council, speaking very regularly at those meetings. Uh, I was president of the West End Neighbor Civic Association. Uh, I was the founder of and still organize the popular movies on the beach in the summer. I was, one thing I'm very proud of, I was the person in this town who led the resident efforts to stop the I-STAR tax pilots twice, the hundred and twenty-nine million, then the eighty-nine million. Uh, I was also a leader in the fight to get the West End Library branch reopened after Superstorm Sandy. I was on a New York Rising Community Reconstruction Zone Committee at the Sandy, which was a state committee. Uh, I was tasked with allocating out about $25 million in rebuilding money for Long Beach. So many of the flood mitigation projects you see going on in the city right now are part of my efforts there. I've also been a member of the Long Beach Community Advisory Committee, which dealt with the redoing the comprehensive plan. One thing you may know me for is because you've read it in the papers, I'm the person who blew the whistle on the improper payouts that were going on in here for Long Beach for years, and hopefully we'll get to talk about that some during the meeting. And finally, I just completed ten years on an advisory committee to the Secretary of Commerce where we were tasked with increasing U.S. exports. And I'm being told I have to stop, so I will go there.
Okay, good for you. Mr. Heller, you're next.
I was born in Long Beach fifty-two years ago. My mom was born here. Our parents moved here from New York City after World War II. Get there for our fourth generation. My family's been in Long Beach since nineteen forty-six. I live two blocks from where I grew up. I'm a product of the Long Beach school system. I grew up bowling, ice skating, swimming, surfing, and playing other youth sports here. I worked delivering news days, serving knishes on the boardwalk, and as a beach lifeguard. I swam for the Tiger Sharks in Long Beach High School Swim Team. I'm an active member of Temple Emmanuel of Long Beach where I was a bar mitzvah. I've been a little league and recreational basketball coach, as well as a longtime volunteer and fundraiser for the polar bears. I'm running for city council because I think we can do a better job balancing all residents' needs. Many residents are struggling to make ends meet, are concerned about the city's ever-increasing cost. I'm also friends with many hardworking city employees who live here and care about the community too. Through four years of John Bendo, your taxes have gone up by roughly 20% and costs continue to spiral out of control, while he has ignored many potential sources of revenue that have been in the comprehensive plan throughout his tenure. The current administration under Mr. Bendo and his running mates by association have neglected minorities within our city, have waited until the election year to announce a rash of new initiatives and have campaigned on a lie that my running mates and I are reconstituted version of some former administration they object to. None of us has higher political aspirations and are unaffiliated with any external influences. The Bendo ticket balloted with and are backed by Nassau County and New York State Democrats. That association comes at a cost. Mr. Lester's associates also balloted by lying about our intentions with certain city employees. This is the type of politics Long Beach does not need. I have an MBA in finance and decades' experience in the financial services industry. I believe that background and my perspective of wanting to balance all constituents' needs makes me a great candidate for city council. I'm excited to be running alongside Bill Nothold and Leah Tozer. We each bring unique skill sets, but collectively share a common vision to move the city forward. Please vote the Long Beach United ticket. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lester.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to thank all of you that joined this call, and I'd especially like to thank the library and the League of Women Voters for hosting us. My name is Roy Lester. I've been a Barry Island resident since nineteen fifty-two. I went to school here through high school, as did all three of my children. Running for city council was never on my bucket list. I served five full terms with the Long Beach School Board, and I know the toll that this kind of service can take on your day-to-day life. But this year, when the Haberman $131 million judgment came down, and it was revealed we were in debt of $460 million, I knew I had to run for council. I've attended council meetings for years, and it was during the I-STAR fiasco, which myself and John Bendo really fought hard against, that I really became aware of what was going on with the city and the financial downward spiral we were in for years. The amount we have to pay this year to make up for all of these years of mismanagement is seventeen million for debt service alone. And as I said, four hundred sixty million in debt, and we had to borrow an additional $3 million just to balance our budget. I've been a bankruptcy attorney for thirty-five years, and I understand the dangers of spending money, more money than you have. I in no way am questioning the motivation existing in City Hall right now, but things do not seem to be improving with the current philosophies and practices. There are numerous issues we all concerned about, infrastructure, parking, affordable housing, just to name a few, but as far as I'm concerned, when running a city, finances are of the utmost importance. That's why all my questions are always focused on revenues, expenditures, and efficiencies. As a bankruptcy attorney, I understand problematic financing, and I haven't spent decades on the school board, increasing our Moody's rating to where it's now seven points above the city's. Experience, commitment, and knowledge. That's what one should look for in a city council candidate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bill Nothold. I moved to Long Beach in nineteen seventy-two. I'm happily married for forty years. My wife Myra grew up in Long Beach. We have one daughter Mallory. A shout out to Mallory tonight. It's her birthday. Mallory may have taught some of your children when she was at Long Beach Middle School. She is currently a reading teacher in Yewlett. I have been an active member of the Long Beach Fire Department for over forty-five years, currently serving as second deputy fire commissioner. I am also an honorary deputy battalion chief of the FDNY. I was employed by the city of Long Beach for thirty-five years, retiring as the chief plan operator for the sewer plant. I love this city. It's my home. Helping the city move forward for me is a must. I felt now was the time. The communities are underserved. It's time for the community leaders to get together and speak about the concerns. Everyone should have a seat at the big table. Let's continue to improve the infrastructure. Let's cut the cost of running the city, create new revenue to help offset the costs. Let's reexamine the comprehensive plan, change the outdated zoning codes. Let's create affordable and low-income housing, redevelop the Stop and Shop Plaza. We need open communication with the public. We must have equality for all the residents in the city. When we are elected, we will work with and for the residents. Together, we can make a difference. Remember, you, the people, elect the city council. The city council works for the people. People are struggling to provide for their loved ones. Their children are leaving home and moving out of town, unable to afford to live here. Projects that have been submitted have been put on hold. City employees need prevailing wages, job security. Employees cannot be intimidated and come to work with a fear of termination every day. It's people over politics. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this forum together tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Posterly. Posterly, right?
Posterly.
Posterly. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. It's great to see you all this evening. Thank you for turning out, and thank you, League of Women Voters of Long Beach and Long Beach Library for hosting this important forum. I'm Tina Posterly. I've lived in Long Beach for over twenty years. I've been involved in many issues from the East End to the West End, including speaking out against the proposed LNG terminal thirteen miles off our coastline, planning to revitalize the Brownfield site where the incinerator was located and turn it into an arts complex, and creating awareness of the damage the wastewater treatment plant has done to Reynolds Channel. I'm currently president of the Long Beach Public Schools Board of Education, and I'm really grateful for my school board experience and the opportunity to work with $140 million-plus budgets. I'm also very proud that the district team in partnerships with state officials enabled us to achieve a 0% tax levy increase for 2021, 2022. That type of teamwork is what we need to replicate at the city level. I'm a communications and government affairs professional with a track record of helping boards and groups of people work together in constructive, productive ways. I want to create a long-term plan for our core infrastructure needs, work with the Comprehensive Plan Commission to make that plan a reality and set it into motion, and bolster our local economy. Working to keep our schools open during COVID has given me experience in best practices to help move our city forward. And as the proud mother of a twenty-year-old daughter, I want to continue the financial restructuring efforts and put measures in place to ensure she'll be able to afford to live and thrive here. It's what we all want for our young people and for ourselves. Most of all, I'm running because I love Long Beach. We have wonderful resources here, but we need to focus our vision and our spending. We need to be more mindful of what we do and how we do it, and with your vote, we can build a stronger Long Beach together. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Tozer Rosenzweig.
Hi, everybody, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and the library and everybody that's jumped on. Twenty-seven years ago, I was driving over the bridge to Long Beach, and I knew that I was finally home. Uh, the apartment that I was looking at at the time was $700 a month, which in today's real estate terms is two parking spots for rent. Uh, I was in the President's Streets, and it absolutely changed my life, and I knew that I wasn't leaving here until Mother Nature kicked me out. Uh, and the only time that I had to leave for a brief three months spent was because of Sandy, which I'm sure that all of us that were here remember that. Very interesting time. Uh, but before I stopped commuting and working off this island, um, I got my real estate license and was board attending in many of our fabulous establishments here in Long Beach. Uh, I also became an ambassador in a restaurant. And I was the luckiest person, meeting every different type of person that was here in this community. The diversity of this city is one of the most endearing qualities of life here. I always heard the concerns of people then, and being a strong member of the business community and a successful businesswoman, I continue to hear all of them now. In two thousand and nine, I met my British husband, brought him here to Long Beach. He fell in love with our city. Hopefully, I had something to do with it. And while I wasn't born here, my two beautiful children, seven and ten, uh, were born here, and they love this place. And this is why I fight every day, is for them and the future of this city. Everything for me is rooted here in our city. I've become very involved in the school system, as I cannot be not involved in everything that my kids are in, including past president of the PTA, now on the middle school PTA. I'm currently on the board of the Chamber of Commerce and previously on the board of the Temple Emmanuel, where I met my running mate Kevin. I am intimately involved in so many aspects of our community, not just one or two, but so many. All of this has always raised my awareness of the issues that our city has been facing. Back in two thousand and sixteen, I helped spearhead the plastic bag van along with my environmental partner, Manda Moore. That was over four and a half years ago, which led me to graduate.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Keep your eye on Nancy Rosenthal.
Oh, my bad. All right, see, that's what happened before, but thank you.
Ms. Waif. Your turn.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. My name is Paulette Waif, and I'm running for city council to continue the fiscally sound momentum set forth by our current administration. I've lived in the East End since two thousand and fourteen. I'm armed with over twenty years of financial services experience. I've been affectionately referred to as Hawkeye because nothing gets past me. Nothing. My goal is to keep putting the residents first while improving upon the city's operational policies over the long term. Our community deserves a strong, forward-thinking, conscious-driven councilwoman who will listen to the people of Long Beach and fight for them as well. I, like most of our residents, were a bit frustrated. I was frustrated when I learned about some of the mistakes that our prior administration had made, and learning about some of these mis- unfortunate mistakes spurred me to take a closer look at the issues affecting the city. While doing so, I heard from the residents all over during my morning commute on the East Loop bus to my walks on the boardwalk. The common theme seems to be it's time to put aside our differences and work towards the betterment and rehabilitation of our city's finances and for the residents to ensure Long Beach's future is secure for our financial security for generations to come. Excuse me. So, from my perspective, being an outsider with no affiliation, I bring a fresh perspective to issues that face our city. For the past fifteen years, I've been an associate vice president of an investment advisory firm. As many of you are aware, some of our biggest issues facing the city is...
I'm sorry, the stop sign is up.
The stop sign is up.
You all see? Nancy, can you see her?
Now I can. Hi, Nancy.
Okay, so really, when you're speaking, you know, just keep an eye out. Thirty seconds isn't a lot. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. We will now begin with the first question. These questions have several parts, so listen, if you need me to repeat them, I've... Okay, the city is in a financial crisis. What are your specific plans to fix the finances of the city? Are you for or against bankruptcy, bonding, privatization of city programs and facilities? Please address all three, even if just a yes or no. And we begin with Mr. Bendo.
Okay, so it is a lot to unpack there in ninety seconds. Uh, I'm in a little bit of a different situation than the others since I'm the incumbent here. So instead of talking about theory, I'm going to talk about actual what we've done. Uh, so yes, we are in a financial crisis. We're the ones who uncovered it. So, uh, you know, here's what we've done. We started right away. We hit the ground running when our administration took over a year and a half ago. First thing we did is we hired a nonpartisan city manager with financial expertise in turning around troubled municipalities. Uh, we changed our watch, uh, our comptroller position from a person that was basically rubber stamping to a watchdog position. We have formed an essential spending committee, which reviews all, all city purchases, and quite frankly, says no to a lot of them. We have cut back on spending significantly because of that. Uh, one of the things we have just done recently was we brought in two renowned financial turnaround firms that are going through the city's operations and finances with a microscope, and they're developing, uh, options for the city to deal with our financial crisis. And, uh, they will present those, and then, uh, they will, they'll be analyzed to see what we do. As far as, I'm sorry, I, I'm running out of time, for against bankruptcy. Of course, I'm not for bankruptcy. Bankruptcy should be an absolute last resort, and I have to stop. Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Heller.
Minute and a half. Okay, very specific plans. Unfortunately, with the time limit, I'll have to be brief. I, I would do a complete top-down, bottom-up review of the budget and work with department heads and union bosses to help us find costs. And then also, we need to find new sources of revenue, many of which have been in the comprehensive plan for years. And absolutely, yes, I'm in favor of seeking ways to do public-private uh, investment partnerships as a way to generate revenue in the most efficient way for the city. Absolutely. In terms of bankruptcy, uh, you know, I'll put it out there. If you do your research, you'll find that, uh, years ago, I stood in front of a city council meeting and asked them to declare bankruptcy. I was speaking as a citizen that was purposely trying to push buttons and get the city to act. However, it was explained to me at the time that it's not easy to declare municipal bankruptcy. The courts would have to approve it. And I don't think we're anywhere near our debt limit such that they would not approve it. So it's very imperative that we work together to find solutions. Bankruptcy is a possibility if we can't get the budget under control, but it should be only a last resort. Historical analysis of bankruptcy filings, bankruptcy filings across municipalities would show that a large percentage increase taxes cause higher fees, reduce benefits for workers, and just causes to pay lawyers and receiver fees, and also increase our borrowing costs. So I absolutely think it's imperative that we do everything we can to get the budget under control and find new sources of revenue to avoid bankruptcy. Thank you.
Mr. Lester.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now? Okay. When we talk about additional sources of income, I am definitely against jamming this town with big buildings, which is what the comprehensive plan Kevin was talking about had proposed. And I really don't think that's the actual issue here. The actual issue is our expenditures. There are very few ways for a city to gain more money other than taxes or increasing the real estate that they're taxing. And I don't think that's really a good idea. I think we are basically at our breaking point, and, uh, all you have to do is try to find a parking space during the day, or, you know, in, towards the evening, and you understand how crowded we are. As far as bankruptcy goes, bankruptcy is a good tool. I'm a bankruptcy attorney. Municipal bankruptcy is possible. I, the people that say it's not, I, I, they certainly don't have an understanding of the bankruptcy law, but it should be a last resort. Where you declare bankruptcy is if a receiver comes into place. You don't want that. You don't want someone controlling the city. Bonding, bonding's absolutely necessary if you're running a city. I don't like it, and I certainly don't like it for our day-to-day finances, our day-to-day costs. And as far as privatization, privatization, if it's a partnership, is a great idea. That was it.
Okay. Mr. Nothold.
City administration talks bankruptcy. I am not in favor of filing for bankruptcy. Operating this city seems very expensive. Revenue has to be graded in cost. Let's stabilize the city finances. Let's cut the costs, starting at the top. Let's try parking meters, maybe a resident sticker possibility. Event cost organizer helps with the cost. We need to promote the city. Restaurants, events, beach concerts, festivals, fairs, sponsorship programs, commercial garbage pickup. How about a community solar program? The recycling system we have. Cardboard is very heavy when it's wet. People are throwing it in the trash. They don't know when they're supposed to get it picked up. Let's do some bayfront development, boat docks, a restaurant, a marina. The sewer plant is being taken over by Nassau County in the very near future. Do we have any thoughts for projects on soon-to-be vacant land? As for bonding, yes, it's necessary, but I do not approve of it.
Thank you. Ms. Pastorely.
Yes, hi. Um, yeah, uh, budget is our greatest challenge, clearly. Um, I know that right now, the restructuring plan that is in place has, is putting us on a good path forward, and, uh, it will help to right-size a long history of woefully fiscal mismanagement that has gone on for a very long time. But I really feel that getting our operations in order and tightening up, I feel will help reduce and manage our current, um, debt situation. will help reduce and manage our current debt situation and focusing on our assets, such as bolstering local businesses so they can make more money and contribute more as they become stronger, and bolstering operations such as beach operations, optimizing that, getting our operations running as smoothly or effectively and efficiently as possible will really help the bottom line as well. I am not for bankruptcy. I'm, I'm, of course, not for bonding. I'm not for privatization. I feel bankruptcy would hurt the workers the most and our public services. And that is, to me, not a good option at all. Bonding, as I know from the school board, can become a necessary evil. Of course, I'm not for it, but it's something that we may have to do until we are more fiscally sound.
Thank you. Ms. Tozer Rosenzweig.
Hi. Okay, so, definitely not for bankruptcy. That's, you know, we should not be doing that, and we can absolutely help it. I'm not for bonding, but like everyone else is saying as well, and I agree that, you know, if it has to be done, it has to be done, but definitely not for day-to-day operations. And while there are still costs that could be cut, things have to be done efficiently, and you have to work with everybody and get everybody into a room so that you understand how each department is actually working, because there is so much money that is just so not spent correctly, and we're just losing money all over the place. As far as revenue, first, I wanted to say that the comprehensive plan is not just about big buildings coming in at all. That's actually not, not true. But, you know, it, we talk about doing like a community solar program, community gardens, sponsorship programs, naming rights for the arena, having actual like water taxis to help bringing people into town and helping businesses. How about, you know, a buy-a-board sponsorship where we're not necessarily having to worry about that, like the benches, which is actually losing money for the city? And I have an actual entire list of how we can bring in revenue into this city. But I know I'm going to have to stop soon, and I don't want to do what I did with my opening statement, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, all. When it comes to Long Beach's finances, it's, it's a tricky one. But the first and, the first and foremost thing I want to mention is a big thank you to the current administration for taking the proper steps and hiring the experts to help us with debt restructuring, which I think is the first thing that needs to be done. 100% against bankruptcy. And 100 again, 100% against privatization. Those, those, those are the major things. One thing is the debt restructuring and possible grants and proper zoning and things of that nature, and the economic development of Long Beach. But bankruptcy is a no, and privatization is an absolute no. Thank you all.
Thank you. We're ready for our second question. Again, several parts, so. There are several quality-of-life issues on the minds of Long Beach residents. Here are just a few. Please let us know if you are in favor or against the following. Retail sale of marijuana. Allowing dogs on the beach. Use of skateboards, scooters, and rollerblades on the boardwalk. Extending lifeguard hours on certain beaches in the height of the summer. And the first person to speak will be Mr. Heller.
Lot of pressure. Let me start with the easy ones first. Lifeguard hours, I think, is a cost issue, I think, on holiday. Holiday times and weekends, we certainly should extend the hours for safety reasons. And specifically on the most crowded beaches, yes. Skateboards on the boardwalk, no. I love skateboarding. Time and place for it. We have great skate parks. We should be promoting where they are. Dogs on the beach, off-season, I think if we can, you know, get the dog owner's license, and they agree to certain conditions, that they lose the license. If they abuse it, they clean up after the dogs, et cetera, I'm, I'm in favor of it. I save marijuana for last. Marijuana's been made legal in, in the state, so that's not at issue here. The issue is, should we extend it for retail sale? I would want to make sure that we don't sell it near schools. We don't sell it near playgrounds. And we limit the number of stores available, but I think it would be unwise for us that need the revenue to turn down a potential revenue source. I think under, you know, if the laws are strictly enforced, sell, sold only to 20 and one and over, you can't smoke on the beach, you can't smoke walking around town. I do think it's something that could benefit the residents to, to generate revenue from the sale here, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wester.
Okay, I'll try to, it's, let me see, sell marijuana, use of skateboards, and extending lifeguard hours. Was there another one?
Allow dogs on the beach.
Oh, dogs on the beach, yes, okay. I'll go backwards. Dogs on the beach during the wintertime or off-season? I think it'd be a great idea. I think it's very important that it be policed. I think it's very important that the owners understand that they have to pick up. But I've watched the dogs at the dog park. I go to the dog park pretty frequently. And they, it's so well patrolled by the owners, by the people that own the dogs, that I think it could really work on the beach. But it would have to be some sort of a snow fence or something, because it has to be some, sort of a limited area. As far as extending lifeguard hours, I've been urging that for years, because if you look at almost all of the deaths in Long Beach, it's been after hours, and it's usually between the 6:00 and the 8:00 PM time. I'd work at Jones Beach. We're open till 8:00 o'clock on weekends. You don't have to have a lot of beaches open, but it saves lives. Use of skateboards on the boardwalk, I really don't find, if it's not a motorized thing, I don't find it as that intrusive. I look at the bikers down there, some going 25, 30 miles an hour. I look at the electric bikes going down there. I think that's a lot more dangerous than a kid on a skateboard. Of course, everything has to be in some way controlled, and listen, if people get out of control, then no. All right.
That's what happens.
She's so mean.
Mr. Knahl.
Thank you. As for the dogs on the beach, I agree, they should be allowed off-season only. I think it's a great idea, having permits for the dogs, which will bring in revenue. I do not believe we should have rollerblades, skateboards, or motorbikes on the boardwalk. The lifeguards, I'm extremely in favor of extending the hours. As a member of the fire department, we do a lot of water rescues after hours. The lifeguards do stay late, and they do help out. The marijuana sales. Marijuana is not my thing. Public forums must be held. The civic leaders, the police department, personnel, residents, they have to be heard. We have to make a decision. Remember that the city council has a responsibility to bring in new revenue. Financially, it makes sense. We are not currently in a great state of finances. Sales would be a huge revenue. If not available in the city limits, it will be brought in from the surrounding area. The residents, school leaders, neighborhood leaders, need to discuss where it should be sold. Control the sales through new zoning laws. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pastorelli.
Hi, yes. I, with my school board hat on, I am in, in regard to the marijuana issue. It is a difficult one in the way that you, of course, see it as, as a revenue opportunity, but we have to, again, be very careful of, you know, how we do this and where we put them. And community input is absolutely key, 100%. Dogs on the beach, I am in favor of off-season dogs on the beach as a proud dog owner. And I know Atlantic Beach does a really good job, actually, when you're doing off-season there. Folks don't really violate a lot of things with cleaning up after the dog. And I think that the permit idea is, is also, it's something that I had talked with a few folks about, the permitting issue. That would actually help to get the dogs more control over who's on there. And in regard to skateboard, scooters, rollerblades on the boardwalk, I'm not really for it. I know there are bikes there, but I know skateboards can be very intrusive and a little carefree attitude, so it would be hard. And as far as lifeguards go, I am for extending the hours. We just need to be careful that we're not taxing our pool of lifeguards. Meaning like, too much for them.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Tozer Rosenzweig.
Okay. So, for the marijuana, I know, well, first, I know the city has to decide by this year, December 31st, whether we're opting in or opting out of that. So that's kind of like out of our personal hands. But it is something that, yeah, there's definitely money to be made there, but there's a lot of concerns for the community, and I think that we really need to open it up and figure out what's going to really go on here. And yes, I wouldn't want anything near where my kids are, so I get it. But it also, we have to look at it as a business decision as well. Dogs on the beach, I've been pushing for dogs on the beach for years. We have so many dog owners, and there's a lot of responsible dog owners. So like, what we're all saying here is basically the same, right? Every, every dog owner should have a license for their animal. Everybody should have a permit. There should be one small area for off-season with special times for people to enjoy walking their dogs on the beach. When I first moved here, I used to walk my ferret on the beach, so I'm all for it. Extending the lifeguards, oh, 30 seconds, sorry. Yes, for holidays, you know, as long as we have enough money to do it and do it right forward, and for having rollerblades and skateboards on the boardwalk. For those of you who take their small children on the boardwalk right now, we should have a better bike lane for the kids, but we can't have that because there are accidents all over the place, so, there you go.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Wait.
Hi, all. So in reference to the skateboards and rollerblading on the boardwalks, I, I feel like it's a bit congested with, with the bikes that are already on, and the people traffic, so it could be a little bit unsafe, so I'm not a real big fan of that. So that's a no for me. Dogs on the beach. If there's a leash, and if there's a designated area, I would feel better about it. And obviously, all the documentation that goes along with it. I, I think it, for as long as the dog owner is responsible, I think it's a great idea. And, and wonderful for both the pet and the owner, especially coming off of a pandemic when we should really be getting out and getting the exercise and enjoying our beach. And as far as the lifeguards, extended hours during holidays, you know, I appreciate them for so much for what they do. Particularly for holidays, it will be great. I mean, lifeguards, let's, let's just say it, they, they save lives, so I think if we can extend their hours, you know, for a holiday in particular, that would be great. And again, referring to the retail sale of marijuana, I, I feel the same as most of you. The reality is marijuana is here. It's legal in New York. I believe it should be up to the residents and a choice via resident referendum. We have to open it up to discussion amongst the residents, and that's my stance on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, again, a lot to unpack in 90 seconds, so I'll go quick. Extending the lifeguards, we already do that on an as-needed basis. We keep rope crews on as well to, to help protect the people on the beach in after-hours time. Skateboards on the boardwalk, nope, not a big supporter of that. Dogs on the beach, it's currently against the law, but I don't think it would be unreasonable to allow it in the off-season when people aren't laying on the beach. The retail sale apart, I'm saving my time for this one, because I think we could spend a lot of time on this topic. Quite frankly, I agree with Paula. I think this is an issue that's actually ripe for a public referendum, and there has been some discussion about potentially maybe trying to get something like that on the ballot for November. Because we need to hear from experts on both sides of this issue. There's a lot of pros and cons. But one thing that people need to really think about is whether we allow it or not, there will be costs to the city. Our police commissioner is estimating we may need to hire at least two additional police officers for enforcement issues related to, frankly, it'll be a lot more knuckleheads in addition to the drunks walking around in the West End. There'll be, now there'll be stoned people. So that has a cost, that additional enforcement. Whether we get it through tax revenues from the sale of marijuana or whether we have to get it through other means if we don't allow it, people do need to understand there will be a cost involved with this. Same, shouldn't be anywhere near schools, houses of worship, parks, and I have to stop.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to the next question. Please describe your history of civic activities and any areas of expertise that make you a good candidate to serve as councilperson. And now, the first person will be Mr. Wester.
Okay, unmuted?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, Long Beach is in a dire financial situation. I've spent the last 35 years dealing with exactly this type of situation. I've represented thousands of people through financial problems with bankruptcy. I've represented a lot of corporations, a lot of different types of financial situations, and basically, I'm an expert on this type of thing. Also, when you look at the experience I've had, five terms on the school board. I've gone through every budget of the school board, every line, the same way I go over the current budget. I've been attending city council meetings for years now. It's not that I just decided to run and never having been to a city council meeting. I've been there. I've gone through the budget. I ask questions. I ask questions and I offer solutions. And that's what the city needs right now. They need somebody to look at the numbers and see what can be done, and see when there's something that is costing us extra. And, you know, there's so many different things that have to be looked at, and that's what I've been doing for years. And anybody who watches city council meetings knows how I ask the questions and how I do my homework beforehand. And in that way, I'm kind of unique for this position. And, you know, it's, it's something I happen to enjoy too, because I really like this city, and I really want to make, see it make it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Knahl.
Thank you. Civic activities, other than the fire department for many years. I was coached, coached the recreation league many times. As a department head, as a chief plan operator, I submitted the budget to the city. I worked with DEC on a daily basis. I worked with the Nassau County Health Department. I don't bring the lawyer part. I don't bring the financial advisor part. I bring the actual hands-on. Over the years, 35 years working for the city, I've seen the budgets made. I've seen where cuts can be made. I see where the costs are escalating. That's what has to be stopped. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pastorelli.
Thank you. I, in addition to being president of the school board, I serve on the school district's equity policy and wellness committees. I'm a member of the Northeast Bay and Canal Civic Association. I'm a former East School PTA co-president and a former board member for Artists in Partnership. And because we only have a short time, I'll describe one initiative that I was a part of when I worked for the organization Riverkeeper, which is an environmental organization protecting the waters of the Hudson. I got them involved in the LNG terminal proposal that was being proposed off our coastline that would have been catastrophic for our water quality and our beaches and our potential safety. And I brought them in. I brought us all in as part of a coalition. We showed up. We showed out on the boardwalk. I was involved in the public hearings here. I, I got Riverkeeper behind it, as well as the other organizations, and fought very hard. And it was a good result. It ended up not being the right thing to do, as they decided, but that's how I get involved and what I can bring to the table, partnerships and leadership.
Thank you. Ms., now, I might, should the Tozer come first or Rosenzweig?
Rosenzweig. That's okay, everybody knows.
Okay.
Okay, I hope that's not cutting into my time right there. Anyway, okay. So, all right, I was on the pre-K PTA as the president. Also, on the regular PTA, the fifth grade committee, and now on the middle school PTA, just because I have to be involved in everything where my kids are involved. And also on some of the advisory boards for the school district as well. I was on the CAC committee because I'm a huge proponent of the environment here. Helped spearhead the plastic bag ban, which I know a lot of people were mad at me for, but it has to be done because our environment is everything. I'm also one of the judges and intimately involved in the Business Olympics for the high school and also for our young business women that are in our high school. Also on the Long Beach Business Industry Advisory Group for the high school as well. And, you know, I'm a real estate broker in town, so all I do is negotiate all day long. But the big thing for me is that I'm the only person here on the entire barrier islands and the only real estate broker in the entire state of New York who did the Land Use Alliance Training Program by Pace University School of Law and Torro Law School, along with the senior staff, the Department of Environmental Conservation, Environmental Protection Agency, the U.S. Department of State, and the city's Department of Economic Development and Planning. That is really my big push here because if we don't have a future here, then we have nothing.
Thank you. Ms. Way.
Hi all. So my background is in financial services. That's what I've built my career on. Didn't know it started out that way. I did most of my grassroots learning and figuring out and teaching right after college. I spent ten years working with inner-city youth who needed to figure out how I did what I did. And that is come from the inner city of Brooklyn and figure out how to get a ticket to college with dorm and food. And that's what I did. I worked on figuring out college tours and financial and time management for, for students that just needed help, that just needed a shot, that just needed a chance. So that's my most grassroots effort. I've got some great success stories whenever you want to sit down with me. But I, I feel like I went to one college tour in my life and that's the college that I went to. And so I know the power of that. So that's how I gave back and that's how I continue to give back, making sure that people are able to take the same steps that I've been able to take. And that's how I build from the ground up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bendo.
Okay, let me unmute there. So I went through a lot of this in my opening statement, but I'll, I'll rehash it. So as far as my civic involvement, currently the president of the city council, which is the ultimate school of hard knocks. Was president of the West End Neighbors Civic Association for a number of years. Founder of the, and still organized, the Movies on the Beach. Probably the thing I'm really proud of is I was the, I was the person who led the resident effort twice to stop the I-Star tax breaks, a hundred and twenty-nine million and eighty-nine million. Otherwise, we'd have two seventeen-story buildings on, going up on that lot with those brakes because the previous administration supported it. I was also a, the person that was leading the fight to reopen the West End Library Branch after Sandy because the library board did not want to reopen the branch. As I stated again, I was on a New York Rising Community Reconstruction Zone Committee after Sandy. That is a state committee that I was appointed to, where we had to decide how to spend twenty-five million dollars on flood mitigation projects for Long Beach, with many of those are being implemented now. And along with Leah, was on the Community Advisory Committee where we worked on updating the comprehensive and revitalization plan. So, and I think I'm going to see my stop sign any second based on my stopwatch, so I guess I'll just stop it there.
Thank you. Mr. Heller.
Yeah, well, starting with civic engagement, I'm currently the Temple Emmanuel Brotherhood president. I'm also on the executive board. As I mentioned before, I've been a Little League baseball coach, a recreational baseball coach, and a volunteer and fundraiser for Long Beach Pole Bears. I was a paid life, Long Beach lifeguard when I was younger for five years. And I've been a lifetime lifeguard. They say lifeguard for life. I've made off-season rescues quite frequently, as recently as a week and a half ago on Long Beach High School Senior Cut Day, which is very hot with cold water and rough seas. I, I, along with my family, from the outset of the pandemic through the end of the summer, until the kids went back to school, volunteered to do food delivery throughout Long Beach, where the kids that relied on preschool lunches were, you know, still needed them even though they weren't going to school. Why do I make a great, great candidate? I mean, I think part of it is I have an MBA in finance and, and several decades in financial services. So I do understand budgets and finances and, and how to look at things at multiple angles. But frankly, more importantly than that, I am Long Beach. I represent those multiple families that are here, multiple generations. As I mentioned, my kids are fourth generation and we're all looking at the potentiality that we won't be able to stay here because of the increasing costs of living here. And I represent those rep, those residents and myself who want to give it one big fight, one push to preserve what Long Beach is, which is a diverse community.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't need the hand for whatever reason on my iPhone, so.
Oh, I know she had the stop sign, huh?
No problem. Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, we're ready for another question. The continued over-pumping of water and lack of serious water conservation throughout Long Island could result in saltwater intrusion into the Lloyd Aquifer. The need for a source of potable water may become a real problem for Long Beach in the near distant future. What are your plans to address this critical issue? And what other environmental issues are you most concerned about? And so it's hardest for the first person, Mr. Knuthold.
Well, I have to be honest with you. I have no experience in the source of portable water, the saltwater intrusion. All I did, I've worked in the sewer plant. I know about the environmental issues. I know about the brownfields behind the North Park section. We have ideas on how to address it. But as far as giving you sources of portable water, I, I cannot honestly, in a professional matter, tell you on what needs to be done.
But you can still go on with what other environmental issues are you most concerned about?
The issues with the brownfields behind the North Park section, the, the old incinerator. That's, that's what I'm looking into.
Thank you. Ms. Posterly.
Yes, I'm actually glad this was asked. Something that I have been looking into and that is a very viable potential solution is there is a Department of Environmental Conservation new potable water source protection program. It recently benefited forty communities in other areas up in near Westchester, you know, the Newburgh area and that sort of thing. That could be a potential solution for Long Beach. It's a competitive program, but I think that, that we have some good, strong reasons to, to be involved with it. And it, we could potentially be chosen. It's just a matter of, you know, applying for it, looking into it and really having back and forth discussion there. So that is something I've been actually looking into for, for a little bit of time. And then another big issue that I have been involved with and that I'm concerned about. But it, it has a good potential solution happening right now is the sewage from our water treatment plant that's going into the bay. And the new project that's been started with the piping that goes underneath to the Bay Park Sewer Treatment Plant is a, is wonderful step. And we'll just need to ensure that that keeps moving ahead and moving forward in the way that it is supposed to. But that is another big issue is getting the sewage out of our bay and we have a step there.
Thank you. Ms. Rosenzweig Tozer.
Well, the environment is, is my big thing here. First of all, we've been having issues and there already is saltwater intrusion into the Lloyd Aquifer. So this is not something that we should be talking about now. I mean, I'm happy we're talking about it now, but this is something that we've been talking about for over six years already. There are a lot of different ways that we can combat that. And a lot of that is actually talked about in the comprehensive plan because it's comprehensive. So there are a lot of ways, because what happens in other coastal communities that have had this happen, they don't have any potable water and what that does to the real estate market, just to throw something that, you know, is my background in there. It just goes completely down the tubes and nobody wants to move into the area. So this is something that we should be doing right now, should have already been doing. The other thing is, you know, protecting our beaches. You know, I was shown the updated and projected flood plans that were based on the current rate of rising sea levels and the reality of the situation is terrifying. And as a matter of fact, when you actually see it, I walked out crying, thinking, my God, I don't know that we can stay here because if we were to get a hurricane, a level-two hurricane here, you know, our entire sewer system is not going to work. So there are so many issues dealing with our environment that need to be addressed immediately. This has to be priority one because everything else will just go down the drain if we don't have our environment. I mean, that's really what we have to do. I gotta stop. Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Way.
Hi all. So environmentally speaking, one of the more noteworthy for me is when I've walked through the North Park area and had the stench of the brownfields over there behind the dog park, behind the rec center there. That's, that's, that's one of the things that, that really I'm passionate about and would like to investigate further. I'm looking into, oh, I would like to look into new and more appropriate technology for our systems and what's spilling into the bay as, as Tina mentioned. That, that would be my passion, just figuring out what has happened with the brownfields and getting some maybe environmental justice for the North Park area. Thank you.
You. And Mr. Heller.
Yeah, over-pumping of, of, of water near Aquifer is obviously a problem, not just in Long Beach, but across the country. Interestingly, I came back from a, a family trip to the Grand Canyon where they get very little rain. But when they do get rain, they, they trap it coming off roofs, roofs. They re, you know, we can look into that. We can look into reclaiming wastewater. We should look into if there are any grants available for some type of desalinization since, since we're surrounded by so much water. So I think there's a lot that we can do there and hopefully through some state grants. As far as other initiatives, obviously, we, Long Beach are barrier island. We are at the forefront of climate change. So as a community, we ought to be actively promoting all alternative sources, solar, wind, electric, et cetera. We should be promoting them and using them. We should be promoting solar use throughout the city. We should be working with the up-and-coming wind turbine manufacturers to, to promote what they're doing. We ought to be going throughout the city. And as some of our older cars, whether they're police, fire, municipal workers, as they get older and we have to replace them, we ought to be replacing them with hybrid and electric vehicles, certainly the buses. So I think we ought to take a, Long Beach shouldn't just be thinking about solutions for ourselves, but we really ought to be at the forefront of alternative sources of energy and, and obviously the water solution.
Thank you. Mr. Bendo.
Okay, I get to put my engineer hat on for a second. So when it comes to the water, I mean, this is something we are, are dealing with at, at the current moment. So we're in a unique situation in Long Beach. We get our water from different sources than the rest of most of Nassau County. So we get our water from the Lloyd Aquifer, which is a much deeper aquifer than where most of Nassau County gets its water. We actually are seeing saltwater intrusion at one of our wells now. So one of the things we are doing is we are now going through the engineering work. We are going to be drilling a new well to make sure we continue to have potable water that is available to the residents. We've also approved, this was a year, year and a half, we approved a saltwater intrusion study to be done so we could map the saltwater intrusion in our aquifer so we could plan appropriately for how to come up with contingency plans for that. So this is something we are dealing with on a, on a daily basis right now. As far as other areas, I think one of the big areas is Reynolds Channel. As you're aware, we're, we're going to be shutting down our sewage plant and pumping our sewage up to Bay Park, which will then in turn go through a long pipe out eventually into the ocean. But we still have to clean up our bay. Other communities have done it different ways, clam beds, oyster beds, things we can do. But we got to restore that, that waterway back there, so, and I have to stop.
Thank you. And Mr. Lester.
Yeah, John is correct about the Lloyd Aquifer. Goes down about twelve-hundred feet. And every time we have to drill a well, it's millions of dollars, which is kind of annoying. But the problem with the saltwater intrusion is the saltwater pools in a certain area. And you know, when I was a kid in high school, I always thought if you put salt in a glass of water, the whole water, the whole glass became salty water. But in the Lloyd Aquifer, the saltwater is actually heavier than the clear water. So what happens is sometimes our wells go into those pockets of saltwater and we have to be careful about that. But the Lloyd Aquifer extends all the way into Queens. And part of the problem is when New York City starts taking water out of there, it really creates a problem because it draws in the saltwater. If the aquifer, you know, if, if water is taken out of the aquifer, it, it is like a suction and it, at that point, it draws in saltwater. But relatively speaking, the Lloyd Aquifer has a tremendous, tremendous amount of water that would last us for hundreds of years. And if, you know, let's say something did happen to the Lloyd Aquifer, we'd have to pump the water in from upstate New York because it's not feasible at this time to desalinate water. It's way too expensive. As far as other problems, Reynolds Channel is a big problem. I haven't eaten a fish from Reynolds Channel for years. We're dumping six million gallons a day of sewer into Reynolds Channel. And once we get the pipeline through, it's going to be a lot better.
Thank you. Okay, next question. What are your specific plans to increase revenue for the city? And how will you balance that with residents' concerns about development, tourism, tax increases, et cetera? And Ms. Posterly, you're on first.
Okay, several different things. There is something going on right back here in the canals that my neighbors have been talking about a lot and I see it as a potential revenue stream. It's standardizing the land use along the bulkheads where that had been put in and exploring, selling the strips and adding another taxable source of income there. I know that there are lots of folks who would like to do that, but offering the loan assistance type program to those who maybe couldn't afford it. And maybe another option would be you can either not do it as a homeowner or you could do it as a homeowner and, and, you know, have it sold, sell it and, or do a loan program in which, of course, there'd be taxable income there. But I know that's something the current administration has also been looking into. And it's just something that would need to be looked at, standardized, but come up with a solution. And that could be a potential revenue stream there. I think expanding and supporting expanding local businesses. And I know some of them would like to do type, food service type situation on the beach and potentially work on that to implement a sales tax for the service that would come along with that. Residents' concerns, nothing that I have or would propose right now would really involve doing the tax increase or, or overdevelopment. And thank you. Stop it.
Ms. Rosenzweig Tozer.
Hi, okay. So being on the board of the Chamber of Commerce, I, and being a business owner, that's kind of, you know, one of the big things that, you know, we're always talking about is how do we bring revenue into the city without doing overdevelopment? And I just want to say immediately that I am not for overdevelopment, I'm for smart development. So I'll talk about one quick thing. You know, if we were able to change the zoning, which hasn't been changed in over thirty years, and we did commercial mixed-use in the downtown business districts and made it easier for people to be able to live and not have cars, be able to go to the train and public transportation, that's one way that we can start raising some revenue there. The other thing is that Uh, the other thing is that we, myself and uh, another person had proposed a comprehensive plan for commercial garbage pickup, which would bring in so much money for the city itself. So what's happening right now, and I'll just use this as an example, is that there are thirty seconds. Oh my God. There is outside vendors that are coming in that, that businesses are paying for, for them to have the garbage picked up. But the Long Beach City garbage pickup pretty much picks up everything. So we said like, why don't we just have a different color bag so that we can be competitive in the market and have our businesses buy into that and bring this, you know, for, you know, money into the city. Um, but you know, we brought that up, you know, four, five years ago, three years ago, two years ago, and it doesn't seem to happen. Um, also have, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That stop sign, I'm watching you Nancy.
This way.
Hi, um, some alternate uh, revenue sources I've spoken about earlier is um, investing in uh, brands. Uh, I'm sorry, looking into grants, um, particularly uh, things like proper zoning, economic development and just overall investment expertise. Um, uh, example would be uh, intermunicipal purchasing agreements. If you, if we work on something like that, it'll give us um, way more buying power. It'll give us, uh, it's a way to save money. I think if we, if we know anything about the current administration, they, they've done an excellent job at trying to um, work out things in-house before doling out money. So let's keep on that, let's keep on that footing and um, investigate, investigate more grants and proper zoning and phenomenal ideas like intermunicipal purchasing agreements.
Thank you. Mr. Bendo.
Okay, so uh, I guess I'll start with uh, one of the big things we're doing right now is uh, parking. We believe parking is a, is a good source of, of revenue. We're going to be issuing an RFP uh, relatively soon uh, to do uh, parking meters in the central business district. Uh, and then we will probably expand it out to there and to the other business districts. Uh, we, we think that's got a lot of potential there, especially to create turnover for the businesses. So um, so they can get customers in their doors as well. Uh, Lee had mentioned this, but smart development, she's right. Uh, there, there are ways to do smart development to increase our tax base. It doesn't have to be big buildings. It could be smartly done. We have a few parcels of land left in Long Beach, not a lot, but that could be done. Uh, a hotel tax. Uh, I've talked to our representatives up in Albany. We have two hotels in town. Uh, when I travel for business, I pay city taxes at almost every hotel I stay at. For some reason, we don't do that here in Long Beach. Uh, another one, and Lee is probably going to smack me for this one, a real estate transfer tax. Um, they've done this very successfully in the Hamptons for many years. Uh, there is a small tax that's put on uh, real estate sales. That money usually goes into a lockbox. Uh, we are thinking of doing it here for infrastructure. Uh, the, the Hamptons uses it for land purchases to preserve open space. Again, we'll take legislation up in Albany. I've been talking to our representatives up there uh, about working on that. And I have to stop.
Thank you. Mr. Heller.
Uh, well, I'd reiterate the sentiment that I am in favor of development, but against overdevelopment. I think we need the type of development that would benefit our residents. As far as um, potential revenue sources, I think there's a lot we can do. We ought to think like beach town. I think we ought to look into a, an oceanfront pier that extends into the ocean uh, that's resilient. A lot of beach towns have that. We ought to look at a bayfront extended pier potentially with restaurants, with a marina, with a water taxi to get people in here from out of town. We ought to develop that stop and shop plaza into something more than it is today. There's a lot of potential there. We could look into solutions that generate revenue for the city, but also promote public safety like red light cameras. Um, I'm in favor of the parking meters as long as residents get um, some kind of stickers so they, they don't have to pay. I think you get more revenue out of the ice rink and you, and the recreation center. If we upgrade the facility, spend a little money there in the short term to attract people from out of town. People, I know tons of people who play ice hockey, for example, adults in Long Beach that go elsewhere. They go to New Bridge Park. They go to Eisenhower Park because they don't, we don't have enough uh, ice time here for them. I think we should look into some type of resort tax, you know, during the summer months, people come here to our restaurants. There's a tiny little tax on their, on their bill that they don't even notice that they could actually potentially opt out of. I've been to other beach cities where there's a tax on the bottom of your bill. And if you don't want to pay it, you can just cross it out. It's a tiny little thing, but it'll accumulate over time. So I think there are a lot of ideas we can look into uh, to generate revenue and we can develop without overdeveloping.
Thank you. Mr. Lester.
Yes, uh, I've been pushing for parking meters for a lot of years now. And I, I'm glad to see that we're thinking about, you know, looking into it. Uh, it'll be nice when we actually see them. We used to have them all over town and uh, didn't quite work out, but that was not, nothing to do with the parking meters. I also would like to see us be charging credit card fees. Right now we're paying eighty-five thousand a year in credit card fees when we, you know, someone uses a credit card. If I use a credit card in a restaurant, I have to pay the three percent or the two percent, whatever. In the city of Long Beach, when you buy a beach pass, you don't have to pay. If you buy it online, you have to pay, but if you buy it just at the uh, you know, at the place uh, Magnolia Boulevard, you don't have to pay for that. That's kind of a waste of money. I do agree that the bayfront should be developed. I'm not sure exactly how, but we've been talking about that for years, for years we've been talking about it. And you know, the pier is nice. It's definitely nice, but it can be so much more. And as far as development goes, why not develop commercial buildings? I mean, we don't need more residents, but you look at something like Lancers. Lancers is a great building, produces money and you don't have, it doesn't affect the infrastructure like a residential property does. That, I guess that would be smart development, but when you're talking about more residences, you're really running into a problem because our infrastructure isn't built for that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Knuthold.
I brought up most of this in my introduction. I'm all for smart development such as the stop and shop plaza. I believe in the bayfront development. We're, we're not talking overdevelopment. We're talking dock spaces for boats, a marina, one or two restaurants, uh, the events we have. Let the organizer pays the cost. Why does the city have to pick up the whole tab? I brought up meters in my introduction. Uh, I've had a lot of conversations with my running mates. Uh, yes, this, the city residents should have some form of sticker uh, that they don't have to pay to meet us so they shop in town. Uh, community solar program that will cut costs. I talked about the commercial pickup in my brief introduction. I do not believe in raising taxes, so whatever we can do to bring in some revenue, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now these are police and fire department questions. Tell us about your views on replacing non-critical and non-violent emergency police responses with professional crisis conflict mediators. Again, then, second part, given the city's financial challenges, do you believe Long Beach needs both paid and volunteer firefighters? And Ms. Rosenzweig Tozer, you're on first.
Okay, um, so let me do the second part of the question because I, I'm going to need you to just uh, redo the first one. I, this is the first time I'm going first, so uh, I'm like, I usually hear everybody else. It's like, yeah, the question. Um, but I think for the unique city that we are, we need to have paid and volunteer environment. Um, uh, can you just go back to the first part again? I'm so sorry, but.
Um, tell us about your views on replacing non-critical and non-violent emergency police responses with professional crisis conflict mediators. That's the first part.
Okay, so what I would say to that is I don't know enough about that particular issue. So I don't want to comment on something that I don't a hundred percent know very well. Um, but again, I am for both paid and volunteer.
Hey, thank you. Wait.
Hi, so I'm going to address the need for both in um, the fire department and paid, alright. So we do, we need them both. We, we need both paid and volunteer fire department because of the popu, um, population density. We need them both. We need them all to work together on the same page. Um, when it comes to having a certain type of response uh, professional rather than a police officer um, respond to a nine-one-one issue, that, that's a tough one, you know. I, I could see some benefit there, but I, I am not in the position to say let's take away a job from a police officer either. Um, but there, there's room for discussion on this. There's room for discussion, but I, I just feel like we need to have them both. We need to um, have them uh, continue to serve and protect us. Um, you know, if we could just take, all take a moment and thank them for getting us through this pandemic this far. You know, that's, I think that's the first and, and most important thing we could say at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bendo.
Okay, as far as uh, the uh, uh, first responders, the professional mediator, you know, we have a problem where we almost require our police officers now to be mental health workers as well, putting them often in an untenable position. Would I be for replacing them completely? Would it some kind of mediator? No, I, I, I wouldn't because you never know what that mediator is going to encounter at a call. Uh, so, but I definitely think they should supplement the police and, and go with them. As far as the fire department, uh, absolutely, I think we need both. We have unique geog, geographic characteristics here in Long Beach that you don't see elsewhere on Long Island, which is mostly volunteer departments. They don't have the density that we have in terms of homes and, and things like that, uh, being so close to each other. They don't have a wall of high-rise buildings like we do along the beach. You know, a house fire will double in size every thirty seconds. So uh, getting someone there as quickly as possible means life and death. Uh, we had two fires here uh, last week. Uh, because the houses are so close, the houses around it were badly damaged because of the heat from the fire. So we have different characteristics here that, that require us to have a rapid response, which is what the paid units are, and then the, the volunteers uh, show up uh, to back them up. You know, this is, I basically view them as an insurance policy. I pay a lot of money each year for insurance for my car, for my house, for flood, hoping I never have to use it. I view our paid fire department the same way. They're an insurance policy for public safety. Thank you.
Mr. Heller.
A lot of people are, are talking about the police as if it's a big cost to the city. I think um, in the recent interest arbitration case, the cost of our police forces come down. I value our police force greatly. I would hate to lose any additional members of the police force. So if there was a way, I know we have a budget crisis, but if there was a way going forward to supplement rather than replace, I don't like that word, replace, with crisis management mediator, I'd love to, to see that. Um, as far as the paid and volunteer firefighters, you know, I'm aware that this has been a big subject of debate also and that many people advocate for getting rid of the paid fire department because they see it as a cost. However, my concern is that we're a barrier island. And so, you know, if there is a, a need for a rapid uh, response from neighboring towns, that might not be feasible where it is in other towns. And we also have a lot of tall buildings that other towns don't have. So I do believe we need both. We need to support the volunteers. Uh, um, and I think luckily I just read about um, Senate Bill S twelve eighty-six. Sorry, I'm reading about, reading it because it's an article that I just came across called the EMS Cost Recovery Act. I think uh, this will allow um, uh, volunteer fire departments across New York State to recoup some of the costs of, through billing their insurance companies for EMS services. So we should, we should look into this uh, right away. Uh, I guess I direct that to Mr. Bendo because he's currently on the council. We ought to look into this right away as a way to get revenue into uh, the city by uh, taking advantage of this bill and that'll help us pack both. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Lester.
Uh, just for a point of clarification, uh, on the collection of EMS fees, we currently collect twelve hundred dollars or bill twelve hundred dollars to the insurance company. So we, we do quite well with the uh, our EMS service. Um, I do have an advantage on this question because I've been both a volunteer fireman and I've worked for New York City EMS for several years. And so I've worked closely with police and firemen. And in New York City, often we had uh, situations where they're called EDPs, emotionally disturbed people. And granted, the police would always come to the calls with us, but basically it was the medics that handled it. And the medics would go in and talk to the people and there was no reason for a gun or anything like that or even most of the time, very rarely handcuffs. But it does really help to have somebody who has some sort of training in that and a professional and really de-escalates the situation a lot of times. Because emotionally disturbed person isn't rational. And sometimes all it takes is somebody to sit there and talk quietly to them. And often things, you know, can escalate in the wrong situation. And the other thing was, I went to a lot of fires with a lot of policemen, with a lot of firemen in New York City. New York City is crowded and stuff and it was always great to have an expert there. I agree that expert professional firemen are in advantage, but on the other hand, we are the only municipality on Long Island that has a paid fire department. And to be honest, I'm not sure. I need to study this a lot more to give a good answer. Okay, I'm done. I'm done.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. On the non-critical emergency responses and the non-violent mediators, I'm not in favor of it. Uh, I believe the police department does a great job with what they do. I would like to see a mediator available um, to assist them. Uh, my question would be, who would determine whether a police officer responds or a mediator responds? Um, how would the mediator be available? Is he going to be on call? Is he, you're going to have to call him from another area? Is he being paid all day? Uh, so no, I'm not in favor of that. I, I, I'm very happy with the police department response. Onto the paid and volunteer fire department. As a volunteer firefighter for forty-five years, this is going to come as a surprise to many. I am full, fully supporting a paid fire department. Um, their response is immediate. They're in the firehouse twenty-four hours a day to respond. Um, we do need an increase in paramedics. I believe in an additional ambulance for a lot of the rescue calls we're doing. Um, I believe in the paid department. I believe in the paid firemen. I'm friends with some of them. Uh, I've taken a lot of abuse in the last three months since I decided to run for office. Uh, complete false accusations. I am not in favor of disbanding them. I'm not in favor of deleting them. I'm in favor of keeping them as well as the greatest volunteer fire department we have in, in the United States. Thank you.
Thank you. We have time for a one.
I'm sorry, I never went.
My God.
So maybe we don't. And I would really like to answer this one.
Right, and I apologize.
No worries. Thank you. Um, I believe we need to give more support to our police officers and supplementing the non-critical and non-violent uh, calls and crimes with mediators would help to alleviate the number of police on those specific calls and would be overall more, more cost efficient, minimize community tension and allow for more focus to be paid on um, crime-related activities. And as far as paid and volunteer firefighters, I absolutely believe we need both. Sandy and the recent business fires and house fire in the West End, all happening in the same day, are solid proof of that. Um, it, we're in such a precarious position here with the bridge and uh, beholden to different elements and getting extra help to come in can be very hard. And I know, I was very grateful during Sandy, um, in particular, to, to have the paid and the volunteers here as well. So, thank you.
We still do have time for a one-minute response question. I'm awfully sorry.
No worries.
Just skipped you. Um, now, you have one minute to respond. What is the one thing you will commit to accomplish? What is the one thing you will commit to accomplish if you are elected to serve a term on the city council? And the first one will be Miss Way. Is she there? All right, I'll I'll take her.
Yes, she is.
Oh, there you are. Okay.
Hi, do you mind repeating the question, please?
I will. What is the one thing you will commit to accomplish if you are elected to serve a term on the city council? You have one minute.
Starting now, economic development, one hundred percent. Um, this is what I do. I've done it for the past twenty years. I've earned my way up to this top. There's no job too small, no job too big. That is my work ethic. Um, when I say they call me Hawkeye, I mean it. Nothing gets past me, nothing will get past me. Um, I only aim to do good and continue the the sound financial footing of the current administration. I cannot stress that enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bendo.
Okay, the one thing I would commit to is that you're gonna see more of the same out of me. I am determined to get this city's finances back in order and get this city back on a sound fiscal path. Almost anything after that is is secondary because we can't do anything the way this the city's finances are 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 uh currently in. We have to fix this city's finances. That is what we have been focusing on. We have been uh going full bore in that area. We're bringing the right people in to do it, and you will see more of that from me. That is the one thing I commit to doing. I mean, there's, there's plenty other things I could talk about, but if you're asking for one, it's gonna be fixing our finances.
Thank you. Mr. Heller.
The one thing I would commit to coming into city council is any issue that comes to the table that we need to work on, I will think about it as from the perspective of the resident. And I mean all residents. I commit to making sure that as Long Beach moves forward and does smart development, that we don't leave residents behind that have been here for decades. The gem of Long Beach is its diversity. Okay, the way the city is going now, we risk losing that. So we do need to find sources of revenue uh that can allow us to stop raising taxes, raising fees, and and just hitting the residents over and over and over again uh to 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 balance our budget. So that's what I commit to.
Thank you. Mr. Lester.
I would commit to controlling our expenditures. People talk about increasing taxes or different ways to bring in income. And I look at how much we spend on things that we don't need to. Last night was a great example. We're spending another ninety-one thousand dollars on uh repairing a building. Ninety-one thousand that we hadn't planned on spending. And if I had my way, we would hold the contractor to his contract. But we, in Long Beach, we automatically say, well, you know, if you go over by ten percent, it's no big deal. But that's, you know, comes out to hundreds of thousands of dollars over a year. We have to watch our expenditures. The the idea of only having one bid and taking that one bid is kind of ridiculous. There's so many ways that we can save money here, and that's the one thing I would commit to because that's the most important thing. If we don't have money, we can't give services to the people.
Thank you. Mr. Knathold.
Thank you. Um, I'm a people person. I want open communication with the residents before any decisions are made, decisions are being made, and the public has no clue. Uh, I want better working conditions for all city employees. And as Roy said, we need to cut the cost to operate this city and bring in more revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Posterly.
Yes, I would commit absolutely to the facilitation of communications channels, streamlining internal and external efforts, um, working inside the way the administration and council communicate with one another, the way the council and administration communicate out, um, putting really good, effective channels of communications in place and bringing attention to our accomplishments as well as what we need and communicating the needs of the residents to the administration and putting channels in place that best help us do that across the board.
Thank you. And last response, Ms. Rosenzweig Tozer.
Last, oh my God, okay. So, well, obviously, it depends on who I get voted in with, right? No, okay, okay. Uh, no, I'm gonna tell you exactly what I am going to commit to right now, and it's not just one, but it's a couple of things. One, we're going to have affordable housing. That is a huge thing for me. Uh, I'll start crying, so I can't talk about it too much. Okay. Um, the other, the other thing is our environment. Everything has to revolve around the environment and getting a comprehensive plan passed is definitely going to happen if I am elected as well as um we need to update our zoning codes. They haven't been done in over thirty years, and there's just literally no excuse for that at all. These are things that I will do without question.
Thank you. And now we are on to closing statements. Well, first person will be Miss Way. You have two minutes.
Hi all. Um, I've spoken to you tonight about some of my background. Wasn't born and raised here. Um, I personally think that Long Beach is a gift to have been born here, and I I just wasn't, you know, born with that gift. I chose to come here, and I'm choosing to stay here. Um, I'm hungry for this. I'm hungry in in a way that that one gets when they haven't had every single thing handed to them. Um, I am not a career politician on some, you know, having some sort of ulterior motive. Um, my mission is clear. I want to pick up the pieces and help to build the Long Beach's financial outlook back to the place where I know it can go and where it once was. Um, quite frankly, I can see that it's not gonna be a quick turnaround, but I'm judging off of the current administration's critical steps that they've already taken. Um, I feel we are on the way to a way more positive uh economic outlook. And um this, this is this, the forward-thinking, tough decision team that I would love to be a part of. I love Long Beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rosenzweig Tozer.
Oh, it's me, okay. Um, so hi, our closing statement. So I, you know, look, we didn't have a lot of time, and there were so many things I wanted to say, and then you think about like, oh my God, I didn't say that. But what I will say is that, look, I've been here a long time, and I too, Paul, I chose to come here. When I came here, I said, you know what, I'm never leaving unless Mother Nature kicks me out. And that's why that's the one thing that absolutely gets me so crazy and so passionate is that I want my children to live here and be able to afford it here. There are families that are leaving here in droves because they cannot afford it. I know some people think it either has to be the Hamptons or it has to be something else, and I just don't see it that way. I think what makes us so amazing and why people love it here is the diversity, the the character of our city. Uh, there's so much that we can do, and I really hate hearing people say, oh, I was in Delray. It's like a clean Long Beach. Or I was over here, and oh, Long Beach would be so great if we did that. I mean, these are the things that make me absolutely bananas. I am one of the hardest-working people that anyone who knows me knows this. That's all that I do. I work for the, I I just, I just want this place to be what it really can and should be. I thank you all for joining here. Please, you know, vote all three, two, three, four. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Uh, next is Posterly.
Yes, my closing statement is is very simple. Um, it's easy to criticize complaining for complaining sake doesn't get things done. We need to find ways to put differences aside and work toward a common goal and frankly, stop letting personal vendetta sideline the important work that needs to get done. The residents of this city deserve that much. My profession and background specifically match a distinct need of this city. I have a unique skill set and track record of being able to work with people to build consensus and move things forward in a positive direction. I would look forward to joining my running mates to do so. And I I wish all my fellow candidates luck and ask for your support and your vote either on or before June twenty-second. Let's make it happen, Long Beach.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Knathold.
Thank you. I've been in this city a long time. I've seen good times. I've seen bad times. I'm not a politician. Running for office is not fun. As candidates, we get attacked on social media every day. I've been told that this is all part of the game of politics. I love this city. My family and I decided to keep fighting for the people, listen to their ideas, their thoughts, help the people believe we can do what's best for the city we love together. As Tina says, I wish all the candidates the best of luck in the primary. And again, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Lester.
Yes, um, over the last few months, I've spoken to a lot of people in Long Beach about a lot of issues. There's a very common thread. Everybody I spoke to loves Long Beach. They wouldn't want to be anyplace else. I went to school in California, and I came back here and settled here because I love Long Beach that much. But they also have a fear. A lot of them are afraid of being priced out of this town. And I, if you look at the history of Long Beach and the continual tax raises that we have and the continuing borrowing that we have to do, and it's, you know, it's certainly not the fault of this current administration, but it's been going on for administration after administration after administration. And every new administration that comes in blames the administration before them. And that's not going to get people to have faith in this town. There's a sense of resignation around people in Long Beach that's really kind of sad. They say, well, it's always been mismanaged, and that's the way, that's just Long Beach. The phrase "just Long Beach." I don't want to hear that. Long Beach can be better than that. Long Beach can be a really good place, and you know what? Yes, it's expensive to run a city, and we need money, but we don't need to spend every penny we that we do right now. We can make this a really nice town. You, you know, when when I think it was Bill that you said, people say it's a nice Long Beach, or was that you, Leah? You know, some other town is a nice Long Beach. We can be that nice Long Beach. We can be, you know, it, there's so much that can be done, and it doesn't cost a ton of money to do it. But we really have to watch the money. And once we start watching the money, you know, yes, there are no instant fixes. There's no, you know, magic that's going to happen, but if we do it slowly and steadily, we're gonna be back on our feet, and we're gonna be the kind of town that's gonna make everybody proud. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mr. Heller.
As I said in my intro, I am Long Beach. I come from a Long Beach family. We need true Long Beach people in the council that have skin in the game and understand what the city is about. Our opponents suggest they want to continue the cleanup of Long Beach but have engaged in dirty politics. We don't need it, and we don't want it. They only announced a slew of new initiatives in an election year and have ignored many sources of potential revenue. They claim to be the most transparent administration Long Beach has ever had but resort to overuse of special meetings, which is against the intent of the New York State Open Meetings Law. They post meetings and agreements after the fact. The intent of these measures is to make it hard for the citizens to be truly engaged. That's the opposite of transparency. During the pandemic, the current administration laid off workers and closed the MLK Center, hurting the most vulnerable of our residents. Then in the new budget, several new hires and raises were handed out to upper management. The administration has shown no effort to create affordable and workforce housing, which absolutely can be done. In some ways, Long Beach people are simple. We want to have fun. We want our families to be safe and our children to attend good schools. We love our family and neighbors. We live here because we embrace diversity. We want to know that our hard-earned tax dollars are spent on things that make our lives better and are not wasted on patronage jobs. We want our elected officials and their appointees to ensure that we maximize our resources to generate revenue to keep the budget under control. The team that can make that happen is Long Beach United, Bill, Leah, and I. We need our ticket to be elected to make real positive change. Thank you to the League of Women Voters Voters for hosting tonight and everyone for attending. Democracy works best when everyone participates.
Thank you. And last but not least, Ms. Mr. Bendo.
Okay, uh, so you know, we've been answering questions for the last hour and a half or so. I guess I have a question now for the for the audience. Um, what do you want out of your city government? Uh, I believe city government should be ethical, transparent, and work to represent the residents' interests. And quite frankly, you weren't getting that for a long time. Your tax dollars are being wasted to ruin proper payouts, numerous patronage and no-show jobs for budgeting and poor fiscal controls. We ended that. Uh, but the problem is after years of fiscal mismanagement, the damage has been done. We have four-hundred-and-sixty million dollars in long-term debt and obligations. But what we're not gonna do is what previous administrations did. We're not gonna kick the can down the road. We've come to the dead end of the road. So seventeen months ago, our administration took over and set about to change the way the city operates. I'm proud of the team we put in place and what we have accomplished. We are making tough decisions that others would not do in the past. Uh, but we're gonna get the city back on a sound financial path, but there's more work to do. We didn't get into this situation overnight, and we're not gonna get out of it overnight. You know, President Wilson said, if you want to make enemies, try changing something. And quite frankly, we've stirred up the hornet's nest. We took away the cookie jar some of these people had their hands in. And now we're even taking legal action to recoup some of that money. We're taking people to court now. Um, but you know, look, there's an old saying, those that forget the past are doomed to relive it. The question you need to ask yourself is, do you want to move the city forward or look backwards? It's up to you to decide. I'm asking you to help keep moving our city forward and support my reelection to the city council in the June twenty-second primary. And also remember, you can early vote this time around um from uh June twelfth to the twentieth. So thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for doing this and to the other candidates as well. Because to their point, this is not easy to do, and they're putting themselves out there, and they should be appreciated for that. Thank you, sorry.
And uh, thank you all for a very informative forum. So thank you all. Um, and vote, June twenty-second.